The September sixteenth, two thousand and thirteen meeting of the Issaquah City Council is called to order. And before I ask you to join the council and me in the Pledge of Allegiance for the Flag, I would ask that we have a moment of silence for the victims of the Washington Navy Yard mass shooting today. Thank you. Next this evening, the council and I invite those who are present to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag, if you wish.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
Next on the council agenda this evening is an opportunity for those who are present in the audience to give the council information about matters of concern or something that may be of interest. And this opportunity is called Audience Comments. The guidelines for public participation are that when you are recognized under Audience Comments, we ask that you please come over to the lectern and use the microphone there so that you may be both heard and seen by those who are in council chambers and by those who are viewing the council meeting on Government Access Channel twenty-one. And it's, it may sound more scary than it actually is. It's, this is a friendly group here. So we ask that you do that, that you use the lectern and the microphone, and we ask that you please give us your name, your address. And if you want to indicate a relationship to the city, for instance, that you are a resident here, or that you're someone who uses a particular service or amenity in the community, or that you have a business here, anything that you think might be of special importance to tell the council about you, that would be the opportunity and the appropriate time to do that. We further ask that people limit their comments to five minutes or fewer, and our city clerk will let you know as you get toward the end of that time, and we'll give you a minutes notice, and then, I believe, a thirty-second notice. So that's something that may assist in timekeeping. And if you have written comments that you want to submit to the city council, please provide them for the city clerk. And with that, I'll ask if there is anyone who has signed to speak up during Audience Comments.
Yes, there are several. Lee, sorry for pronunciation, Callad? And after Lee, we have Leanne Hayes, followed by Edmund Hewitt.
Hi, my name is Lee Callmuck, and I live at five eighty Front Street, and I'm a resident. And when I first moved here in ninety-three, I used to walk Front Street, turn a left on Front Street and walk and do the trail, and then walk all the way back up to my condo. Did it about four times a week. I no longer do that because I don't feel comfortable walking the trail now with all the activity that's going on. So now I walk Front Street and walk around the fishery and walk back to my condo, and I think it's a shame. So I just wanted to let you know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Leanne Hayes, followed by Edmund.
Hi, my name's Leanne Hayes, and I live at one four nine one nine Issaquah Hobart Road. I've been a resident for a very long time. I've got four of my own children, and we've been involved in the community, our whole family, for a very long time. Our concern, as well as hers, is the trail and the skate park. I've got a child, Cory, at Tiger Mountain School, and my youngest son used to go to the middle school, but now he's at Liberty, and my two other children are graduated and college now. I just think it's a huge concern what's going on at the park with all of the schools in that general area, with all the small children, and also the community center, because there's a lot of developmentally delayed children and adults that use the community center on a daily basis, and they are exposed to what's going on at the park. I don't think the actual skateboard facility, whatever you call it, the little roundy thing, I don't think that's the problem. It's the drug dealers and the kids that are using the drugs, which there are a lot. I know some of them personally, and myself and my kids over here, we've been kind of going down there and trying to help these kids, and have really seen, it's been a big eye-opener. We didn't realize how big of a problem that it actually is until, I call it the weeds. We walk down into the weeds, and it's terrible. And I realized that if the kids weren't using the drugs, the drug dealers probably wouldn't be there to sell them. But there's a bigger problem than just selling the drugs. The drug dealers are selling pills to get kids off drugs. So they're telling the kids, okay, if you want to get off heroin, I can sell you these pills to help you get off the heroin. So they're double-dipping. So the drug dealers are pretty smart. I just like to help and be involved, and I'm getting the kids involved. And I guess we have more questions than I'm looking for answers, actually. So that's why we're here, just to start getting involved, and I've got kids to get involved now. And they feel it's very important. We've seen several kids almost lose their lives, and it's hit these boys pretty hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edmund, did you wish to speak?
Hi, I'm Edmund Hewitt. I live on one eight zero two one one forty-four Street in the Renton Highlands, and I go to school at Tiger Mountain. And what I think is, I kind of have like a suggestion, almost. I used to live in Maple Valley, and the Cedar River Trail used to go from Renton all the way through Maple Valley. And there was also a drug problem there on the trail, and all they had to do was put in cameras throughout the trail of like the bad parts of the trail, certain places on the Maple Valley Trail. And they had arrests, and now they're, excuse me. I went there to like a few weeks, a few weeks ago, rode my bike. I just saw just average, everyday people like you and me just walking down the trail, no drugs, no sketchy people. And like, that's what I would like to see on the Issaquah Trail. That'd be great, because we come down here, and it doesn't look nice. Like, it's just a whole bunch of people on the trail, just, I just don't really like it that much. And, oh, it's like, what kind of questions? I was asking, like, is it okay if I ask questions? Did you guys plan on moving the park, or just, or leaving it there?
Well, those are ones that are under consideration right now, right now by the council, and the council has taken action. Normally, we don't engage in questions and answers, but by way of background, this is something that's being considered and was voted on for potential funding in this coming budget. So that's certainly being looked at.
Yeah, again, I just wanted to put out the suggestion of maybe putting, you don't exactly have to move the skate park, but just like put cameras throughout that part of the trail, and it might, I think it would help a lot, actually. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there other people who've signed up to speak? Is there anyone here this evening who has not signed up to speak who would like to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is Cory Hayes. I live with my mom at the same address. Just one, my concern is family and friends that have kids and friends down at the trail that use drugs and that sell drugs. I first, I went down there a couple days ago, and my friend just recently relapsed, and he was completely out of it, and it hit me so hard because he just got back from rehab. And the next thing you know, I saw him down here at the trail, and that made a big part, that made a big impact in my life. And I've known the kid since we were in preschool, and I love him to death, and I'd do anything for him. And it's the kids that have family, friends that care about them, that they don't realize what they're doing to them. They're just worrying about what they can do to themselves to get them high, to get them, you know, just to get their fix. They just want, they just care about what they can do for themselves. And my friends and my family are my biggest interest in my life. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak who hasn't had an opportunity as yet? Yes, ma'am?
Hi, Christina Bruning, five eighty Front Street South. Madam Mayor and members of the council, I moved to Old Town Issaquah in nineteen ninety-one to be close to trails so I could go hiking and cycling without even getting into my own car. I walk in Issaquah for transportation, exercise for fun, and I'm actually a walking ambassador for the city, which means I'm out there all over town, helping people get to different places in addition to leading my own walks. I want to showcase Issaquah as a destination for outdoor activities, boutique shopping, art, and culture, and inspire people to come back again and again to create their own adventure right here in Issaquah. I'm concerned about the Rainier Trail. Our property is next to the middle school, and we come right up on that trail ourselves, and I'm out there many times a day. The impact is not something that can easily be articulated, but no action is actually a disservice to our residents and to our youth. During the July first council meeting, the community spoke of a message, strict orders not to go on the trail, horrifying for families, a level of violence, unsavory activity on the Rainier Trail. And getting rid of the skateboard park was good, but it's not going to solve the problem. And I think tonight we're hearing this message get echoed again. I want to recognize that the council, I know you have all been engaged in this issue, and that with the broad-based support with the Issaquah Community Network and the Drug Free Coalition, that there is awareness throughout town. The level of the issue is what I'm concerned is not fully, fully out there. I participated personally in the Rainier Trail cleanup. I got a huge dose of reality of what people are doing today with heroin and other drugs. I also am part of the Rainier Trail walking program. And as I said, I walk that trail constantly. I have seen blatant drug deals, various ages, from middle school kids, young adults to older adults, that you wonder, what on earth are they doing there? I have smelled some really bizarre things, including fires. That close to my home, that is a concern. I have talked with families, students, individuals, and businesses throughout town, and there are stories that are countless, and I have listened to many of them. I was saddened this summer when a couple came to Issaquah because of its quaint beauty. Their parting words to me were, "We will never come back here again." He was here to skate ski on the trail, and she was walking. The past months, I have spent countless hours dealing with increased trespass, car prowls, and concerned neighbors, not always successfully calling the police, as the calling IPD actually agitates somebody already high on drugs. If I did call every single time, I might as well have an open line to the police. That's how severe the issue is. It takes away from the quality of life living here, knowing that every time I walk out my door, this is what I'm faced with. I understand the challenge for the police because of the way it is. They push the students into the forest, which means into our backyards, and we then see opportunistic crime. We have people hiding in the woods constantly. Recently, on my way to the farmer's market, I actually met a couple of the folks living on the trail, and I was devastated and riveted by their story. They trusted me enough, they had no idea who I was, but to share, I'd say, a very unfiltered story. These are not kids from Issaquah, and when they tell me, these kids, we are a destination for this because nobody does anything about it. They're from Burien in West Seattle, and they said, "We saw drugs, but nothing like here in Issaquah. This place is messed up." Fourteen-year-olds looking for heroin. That was a rude awakening to me, that we need to take action, and swift action. So with that, I just want to call to action, us as a community, that when we look at economic vitality and wanting to increase overnight stays, I don't think that means on the Rainier Trail and in our jails. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't had an opportunity to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening, council, Madam Mayor. I'm Jeff Tanca, longtime resident of Issaquah, twenty-three years. Tonight, I'm here as an HOA president, representing our community of forty-eight homes. We are located right here in Old Town. My comments tonight here are regarding the Rainier Trail. Seems to be kind of a reoccurring theme this evening. The concerns are not new. They are documented over various years. The issues are blatant drug activity, extensive congregating of unsavory elements, and this includes persons of all ages and persons that are known to be from Issaquah and elsewhere. With the continued rise of problems on the Rainier Trail, there's been a direct correlation to escalation of problems in our community. These problems are trespass, increase of petty crime, littering, car prowls. Due to the perceived inability of the city's part to get a handle on this problem, our community has taken various steps, including the formation of a community awareness team, posting of no trespassing signs, they get torn down, participation in the Issaquah Drug Free Coalition. Our community actually had a very high percent participation in the Rainier walking program. Unfortunately, we observed that the more we went back there, the more the people back there doing the drugs got accustomed to adults and were no longer hiding in the woods. They were blatantly doing their activities in plain sight. We've had residents that were involved in cleanup of the trash along the Rainier Trail, both as an organized effort with the Issaquah Cleanup Day and also self-cleaning efforts. We have frequent interaction with IPD regarding drug and alcohol use on the trail, passed-out individuals, homeless camps on the Rainier Trail. We've had meetings with ISD officials, and it's interesting to note, when we were speaking with then-Supervisor Rasmussen, he declared that there was no problem with drug use on that trail or in the proximity of the four schools in that area. It was very disheartening. We've met with various city officials, both administration and elected officials. Yet the problems continue to grow, as you are hearing here tonight. Approximately thirty percent of the homeowners in our community have expressed unsolicited concerns to myself and other board members regarding problems such as a mother who was running on the trail and had some individuals jump out of the woods and harass her, refusals to let fourteen-year-old kids use the trail for any reason whatsoever, families with toddlers no longer comfortable utilizing the trail, senior adults refusing to walk the trail. We have residents with pets that are no longer willing to walk their dogs on the trail. There's also a general discomfort utilizing the trail due to activities in the adjacent woods, things that you can't see but you can clearly smell in here, trail blockage, unsavory people literally laying or sitting across the trail, and obvious drug activity. We've, I have personally heard of similar concerns from other properties on Front Street who also have adjacent property to the Rainier Trail, be it Arrington Place, which is a hundred and fifty homes, and Windsong, which has one hundred homes. One of those sites is actually contemplating hiring site security to address the issue. Again, I'm going to echo some things here tonight. Moving the skateboard park is not going to impact the problem on the Rainier Trail. It's definitely a separate issue. And there was an article in the Issaquah Reporter this past week that I thought was pretty interesting. They were interviewing the Issaquah Parks Manager, and it says, quote, "Not so savory activity after dark in the park." And the interesting thing is, it's not an after-dark issue, it's an all-day issue. It ramps up at nine o'clock in the morning, regardless if it's in the summer or during school, and does go through well into the evenings. Another quote, "Drug users and homeless youth tend to frequent the park, which discourages kids who actually want to skate from using the venue." My question on this, again, it's not the Rainier Trail, it's the issue. What about all the citizens that want to walk the trail, run the trail, ride their bikes? Is another venue going to be created for them? We are very frustrated with the city's inability to get a handle on this, and if the city is unable, unwilling, or lacks the resources, we urge you to go out and seek the appropriate resources that are necessary, be it even if it's at the county level, state, federal. We want to stress that relying on citizen organization groups to hand out, you know, drug use flyers is not going to affect the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone who has not had an opportunity to speak who wishes to speak during Audience Comments? Anyone else who wishes to speak? Anyone else who wishes to speak during Audience Comments? Seeing and hearing, no one else who wishes to speak during Audience Comments? Audience comments now are closed. The next item on the council agenda this evening is entitled Committee and Regional Reports, and so I will go through and ask the council if they have council committee reports or regional reports that they wish to make, and we will start out with Council Member Forkner.
Thank you. The Council Infrastructure Committee has been moved to September twenty-fourth, that's a Tuesday, at five-thirty PM in the Pickering Room, and the agenda for that meeting has not been set yet. That is a departure from our normal monthly meeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Land and Shore Committee met last week, September tenth, and we had three items on our agenda. The first was update of the Cloughane Potential Annexation Area Election, and we, the committee, suggested to Trish Hanenin that perhaps it's appropriate, that the entire council is kept up to speed on what's going on with the Cloughane PAA election at this time. And so I think from here on out, the full council will be getting updates at the same time that the Land and Shore Committee is. We also discussed, again, discussed the Swedish Development Agreement, and I think the, still on track for that to come to the council on October sixteenth. So this would be the time that council members who are not on land and shore might want to start looking on the website for the draft Swedish Development Agreement and start familiarizing yourself with that, with that document. And we also discussed Agenda Bills sixty-six, sixty-eight, amending land use and engineering fees, and the Land and Shore has had this Agenda Bill before us for three meetings, and we've struggled a bit because there are some significant policy issues, and they have to do with just how much the council would like to subsidize permitting and some other issues. And so the committee has recommended that this Agenda Bill come before the full council in a work session, and I think that will be scheduled sometime this fall. The next meeting of Land and Shore is October eighth, here in council chambers at five PM. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Interest Group met last Wednesday, but we don't have, minutes haven't yet been published on that. There will be a couple issues that I'm going to want to bring up, and if we're good at the order, at the end of probably the October seventh meeting. So as those minutes get out, I'll forward on to the, I'll point out in an email to the rest of the council some of the issues that are before the pick, for which I'll want some feedback on the seventh. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scher?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening to members of the viewing public. The Eastside Transportation Partnership met last Friday. We had a presentation from the Washington State Department of Transportation regarding issues relating to regional tolling, specifically on what is called the Cross Lake Corridor, more specifically on Interstate ninety across Lake Washington. And the state DOT is currently in the early planning stages of looking at the impacts of tolling in many different ways. That will also include a formal EIS, Environmental Impact Statement, and as the process moves forward, there will be opportunities for the public to provide comments and feedback to the state. So please do give your opinions on tolling to the state DOT. I know they are very interested in hearing what the public has to say and how it will impact you and your daily lives. We also had a discussion and nice presentation from our very own Senator Mark Mullet from the Fifth Legislative District, who provided information on the current legislative process and attempts to get a special session in Olympia with respect to a transportation funding package. And Senator Mullet remains cautiously optimistic that something can be developed, although he stressed time is extremely short for the legislature to consider taking action. Additionally, we had some discussion related to legislative policy and ETP's role in working with state legislators and providing our position on regional transportation issues to the governor and the state legislature, and a letter that went out from ETP in that respect. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Services and Safety Committee met on September fifth. There was five items that came before us that evening. Two of them are on this evening's consent agenda. The first is the Petty Cash Ordinance Amending Issaquah Municipal Code, and also Petty Cash Increase in the Amount, the Account Dollar Amount are both on consent. Domestic violence will be brought up on regular business this evening for more discussion, as will the establishment of a contingency fund is also under regular business. We will next be meeting on October third, and if I could, I have also a committee report or a community report as opposed to a regional report. And we've just heard from Robin Kelly, who is Executive Director of Salmon Days, who is back east for the International Festival and Events Association, that we have been the recipient of twelve awards, five gold, three silver, and two bronze, everything from the best new event, the best commemorative poster, the best pin, the best T-shirt, the best new event. But I think probably the very best of all of those bests is the fact that we were nominated and awarded to be the best overall festival out of all, everyone in our particular category, and this is from the International Festivals and Events Association. So quite a great accomplishment. So come fifth and sixth downtown Issaquah, come and spend some time with the Salmon Days, and if you still have some time left, you can also put your hand up and still have time to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. The next meeting of the Eastside Human Services Forum Board is this Wednesday, two days from here on the September the eighteenth. I'll be attending, and I'll have a report at the next council meeting following the board meeting.
Councilmember Butler?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The next committee of the whole council will meet on September the 23rd. That is a Monday. We've switched from the 24th to the 23rd, so it's a day early. There are four agenda items, an update on the Cloughane Potential Annexation Area, a presentation by King County Public Health titled Coverage is Here, King County, the third, a legislative debrief from the last legislative session, and a discussion of our potential 2014 legislative agenda, and then finally, a briefing and discussion on the Public Safety Answering Point, or PSAP. That report is a consolidation from the Steering Committee, and that will be at 6:30 here in council chambers, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. There are several items that are not listed on the printed mayor's report for the council, and one of them is that tomorrow evening, there is a Senate Bipartisan Transportation Committee meeting in Bellevue, and I believe Councilmembers Winterstein and Martz are going to attend. Councilmember Winterstein?
Yes.
All right, that was an error in information that I was given. So, it's okay. But there will be, Issaquah will be present and speaking to transportation needs that our community has in the Senate committees look at deciding whether or not to ask for a special session to address transportation problems and what has been described as a transportation package. The next item, there will not be an executive session this evening, so no executive session, and then there are several proclamations, which I'm going to bring over to the lectern The first proclamation has to do with proclaiming September 2013 National Recovery Month in the city of Issaquah, and I call upon citizens to join me in observing this month with appropriate programs, activities, and ceremonies supporting this year's Recovery Month. And the proclamation has to do with behavioral health as an essential part of health and overall wellness, and the fact that prevention works, treatment is effective, and people can and do recover from substance abuse and from mental disorders. And whereas the benefits of preventing and overcoming mental and/or substance abuse disorders are significant and valuable to individuals, families, and the community at large, and that people in recovery achieve healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and contribute in positive ways to their communities. So we urge relatives and friends of people who have mental and/or substance use disorders to implement preventive measures, to recognize the signs of problem, and to guide those in need to appropriate treatment and recovery support services. There is additional information. In 2011 alone, 3.8 million people received specialty treatment for a substance use disorder, and more than 31.6 million adults aged 18 or older receive services for mental disorders. So I am here presenting this proclamation, and I would like to invite Cheryl Golick to please come forward to receive the proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, everyone.
There is another proclamation. It is that our community, as they have done for many years in the past, will be joining forces to feed the hungry during the Month of Concern Food Drive, and so volunteers will be collecting food at supermarkets on September 21st and 28th, as well as October 12th. And I ask that people who are hearing this or seeing this on our Government Access Channel, and those who are present in the council chambers, look for volunteers at numerous grocery stores in our community. You will find volunteers at Front Street Market, just across the way here, at Fred Meyer, at the QFC, and at Safeway. And at those stores, the volunteers can give you a list of items that are needed. And what they're encouraging people to do is that as you go and do your grocery shopping, that you perhaps buy some additional items and then provide them so that they can be distributed to local food banks. In addition, September 28, 2013, is proclaimed as the mayor's Day of Concern for the Hungry. This is across King County, and I strongly urge all citizens to join the emergency feeding program and our local food banks in nourishing those who are hungry. And this proclamation will be going back to Seattle, King County, something that we've done for a considerable number of years. There are two other items on the mayor's report this evening. The city's Arts Commission is now seeking proposals for arts and culture projects and programs for our Issaquah residents and visitors during the year 2014. Applications are available online at the city website, and the deadline to apply is November 1st of this year. Then another thing, don't forget that it's Samon Seezun, so that's spelled S-E-E, and we have numerous salmon-related puns in our community. That is one of them. This is everyone's annual opportunity to spot Chinook, Coho, and other salmon species in Issaquah Creek and local waterways. And for anyone who has gone and stood on the Hatchery Bridge, you can see lots of Chinook coming in, and the occasional Saukai. So more information on locations such as the salmon hatchery and other spots, please visit the city's website. Thank you. I will ask the council if you've had an opportunity to review the accounts.
Yes.
All right. And then I will ask the council's pleasure on the consent calendar. Councilmember Butler?
I would move approval of the consent calendar as submitted.
Second.
Okay, moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent calendar was adopted unanimously. The next item is Agenda Bill under regular business, is Agenda Bill 6696, an ordinance having to do with domestic violence, specifically domestic violence committed in the presence of children. This is returning from the Services and Safety Committee, and the originator of this ordinance, the proposer of this ordinance, Councilmember Cher will be speaking to it.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Agenda Bill 6696, and I'm going to read briefly the summary statement for this legislation, which I think is extremely well-written by our administration. It states, "In an effort to break the cycle of domestic violence, protect children in domestic violence situations, and rehabilitate abusers, the following ordinance is proposed to strengthen our current domestic violence laws. This ordinance would make it a gross misdemeanor to commit a domestic violence offense in the presence of a child 16 years or younger. If an offender is found guilty and sentenced to spend less than the maximum statutory sentence, not less than 30 days, the court imposed conditions would include the attendance of certified domestic violence perpetrator treatment, as well as a treatment program that addresses the effects of domestic violence on children. Domestic violence affects children emotionally, cognitively, behaviorally, socially, and physically. Children who grow up in violent homes are deeply affected by domestic violence as it happens, and could become the next generation of batterers and victims. The single best predictor of children becoming either perpetrators or victims of domestic violence later in life is whether or not they grow up in a home where there is domestic violence. This ordinance would help break the cycle of domestic violence within families by protecting children and rehabilitating abusers through treatment programs. It would also provide a strong leveraging tool to engage defendants to enroll in treatment programs and counseling, likely resulting in only a few defendants actually serving the mandated sentence. The enactment of this ordinance would send a strong message to the community about the value we place on the safety of children and families in our city. The Services and Safety Committee met on September 5th to discuss this Agenda Bill. The committee recommended approval of the ordinance and placing it under regular business." With that introduction, I would move to adopt ordinance number 2691, adding a new section 9.06.060 to the Issaquah Municipal Code prohibiting exposing minor children to domestic violence and establishing an effective date.
Second. Okay. Moved by Cher and seconded by?
Barber.
Barber. Discussion, or would the council like to hear from Commander Beerbaum, who is here to speak?
As Councilmember Cher repeated in our original statement, the intent of this proposed ordinance is to reduce instances of domestic violence, to reduce exposure of domestic violence to children, and to reduce recidivism rates. I think with this ordinance, we will be able to accomplish this by highlighting the negative impact on children exposed to domestic violence and providing that strong leverage tool to prosecutors to incorporate that treatment programs and counseling that our defendants will face. Keeping it short for you.
Questions or discussion from the council? Councilmember Goodman.
This is modeled after, I want to say, Federal Way, which is modeled after ordinances in Oregon, correct?
And Utah.
And Utah. So I called and talked to the prosecutor, one of the prosecutors in Federal Way, and we had a good conversation about the impact that this has in their community, and I was quite pleased with what I heard, and that it does have an impact, that as soon as this ordinance is, because of the mandatory sentence, it has the effect of deterring, and has the effect of also keeping violators from violating their pretrial agreements. And I asked what the negatives were, because I just assumed there would be some negatives, and there are not any. So I'll be supporting this ordinance, and I thank you for bringing it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Cher.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few words. Thank you for your comments, and I'm extremely proud of sponsoring this legislation. As has been mentioned, it's been successfully on the books in Federal Way for a number of years, but I believe that we will be the first east-side city to adopt an ordinance that directly addresses the impact of domestic violence on children. There are many crimes that have mandatory minimum penalties, but unfortunately, misdemeanor acts of domestic violence by themselves do not. Frankly, that shocks me, because assault, malicious mischief, and harassment all have an element of intent, meaning they are purposeful voluntary acts. Put simply, an offender does not commit domestic violence by accident. I recognize that false accusations can get made, and jail time can be difficult for the economic stability of families, but this law is reserved for individuals who are convicted, either by admission or a jury of their peers. By establishing a new city code which is separate from the provisions of state law, this ordinance gives our prosecutor another tool to protect public safety and to hold perpetrators accountable. And even more than that, it requires an offender to receive treatment that specifically addresses their behavior and the harm they've inflicted on a child. As a public servant and as a parent, if I can take a step that results in one person, even one person, thinking twice about his or her actions, and one fewer child having to witness violence between family members or significant others, then society is better for it. Through this vote, we will take a step in the furtherance of a moral responsibility to protect the innocence of youth. We are not just talking about change, we are not just witnessing change, but we are agents of change, and tonight, we can stand to make a positive difference in our community. So let's join together and make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Martz.
Do we expect this to have any impact on the IPD or on our jail facilities?
As is seen in Federal Way, the initial impact would be a slight increase of charges placed in the court, but it should show an increase in completion of court-mandated treatments, thereby avoiding some of the long-term jail commitments.
Great, thank you.
Other questions or discussion? Is the council ready to act then upon this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. The next item to come before the council this evening under regular business is a resolution having to do with authorizing, whoops, no, I just, I just misstated something. That is not what you're doing next. The next item, actually, is Agenda Bill 6698, which has to do with a proposed ordinance for the establishment of a contingency fund for the city. And we have Beth Ann Rowe, our Deputy Finance Director, here to present this, and this is something that is coming back with a recommendation from the Council Services and Safety Committee, and so I think after the presentation that there will be the need then for a motion.
We'll have a motion.
Thank you.
Okay. Hi, members of council, Madam Mayor. What you have is Agenda Bill 6698, and it's an ordinance recommending establishment of a contingency fund. This is in accordance with moving forward on our proposed comprehensive financial and budget policies, industry best practices, and prudent financial management. Establishing the contingency fund is considered a component of maintaining a strong financial position, and provides the city with the ability to have some financial flexibility for unforeseen circumstances or emergencies. Also, it's a component for demonstrating to outside agencies, as in bond agencies, the city's commitment to a formalized reserve policy. The, in the ordinance, the fund is authorized and established accordance with RCW's 35A 33145. In establishing it, there is no minimum amount that you can have in a contingency fund, but there is a maximum allowable amount, which is stated in the ordinance. And then there are definition of what emergencies they are, and that's also in the ordinance as well. Kind of the best, I think, when you're thinking of a contingency fund, an emergency fund, kind of like what we do in our individual finances, you have a 401K that you put away money for future, hopefully retirement, which we'd like to probably do earlier than later. If an emergency comes up, that money is available, but you would stop and think about it before you would withdraw that money. So this ordinance is before you, if you have any questions.
I'd like to move this evening to adopt ordinance number?
2692.
Establishing a contingency fund.
Second.
Okay, moved by Barber and seconded by Winterstein. Yes, Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This came before Services and Safety, and as we reviewed this particular Agenda Bill, it was decided that we wanted to bring it forward to the regular session this evening as opposed to consent agenda, because we felt that there was some very strong reasons that the city is taking this step, that we want to make sure that we are ready for any unfortunate, and hopefully we don't have any of those as we had a few years ago, as the dollars and the recession hit, but that we are prepared, and that the city is ready for anything that might- for anything that might provide us the need for having a little bit of additional contingency funds. But this also does provide us with some financial strength, as it demonstrates the city's commitment to formalizing a reserve fund, and the strong reserve policy helps to achieve a better credit rating. So on top of having us prepared for unforeseen, this also helps us in the future as we move forward and wanting to move a little bit outside of our and bring in some additional credit ratings as we need. So I'll be strongly supporting this this evening and hope to move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Cher?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think the analogy with the 401K was a very good analogy. I wasn't really thinking about it from that context. I often think about our financial policy the way I do a personal budget or a household budget. And, you know, obviously, I think it's good practice in individuals' personal lives as well as in government to always set aside some money for a rainy day to have that available. I'll tell you what concerns me, though, about doing it this way. I feel it ties our hands a lot, and I know there's some really big benefits to doing it. It helps our credit rating. I know it has a lot of positives that were just mentioned. I think our city has done a very good job with its financial policies. At least since I've been on the council, I've seen really good budgeting, I've seen really good set-asides, and really good, what I would call almost fiscal conservatism, which I see as a good thing, to make sure that we maintain a healthy general fund and that all of our smaller funds are well-maintained with a strong balance. And, again, what concerns me here is the idea that we're somehow tying our hands by restricting these funds. The funds are going to be there, the money's going to be there, whether we put it into a rainy-day reserve or not. If the money's there, it's there. The question is, is it easily available, or are we somehow tempted to take that money and use it for other purposes if we don't squirrel it away in this type of fund? And I don't think we are. I think that we have a good council. I think that in years in the future, we're going to continue to have a good council and a good administration that will provide for sound financial policies. And I trust this council, as well as others who will sit in these chairs in the future, to make sound economic decisions about the money that we have in the city coffers. And I just don't see that the benefits of the credit rating and the other things necessarily outweighs the tying of our hands to use the funds if we choose to, as a policy matter, use whatever funds are available in some other way. So, I'm not strongly against doing this, I'm just not sure it sort of passes that red line for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you. I, as I'm reading this again, I just have one question. In Section 1 of the ordinance, it says, "The purpose of the contingency fund will be to support general fund expenditures in future periods." I don't know what that means.
The general fund is kind of the main operating fund of the city, so if there were, like, a natural disaster or whatever, then you would probably look to the general fund and the property tax support and sales tax support to help shore up or for the money for those emergencies. And so, and/or if there was a shortfall in those revenues, that contingency fund, the rainy-day fund, is tied to the general fund.
Okay, so we might pay for that emergency out of the general fund, and then the contingency fund would be used to repay the general fund. That's how that would work. So we wouldn't actually be paying directly from the contingency fund.
Well, that would be...
Both?
Both. That would be a decision from council, whether you would want to use general fund revenues, and maybe if you didn't have enough, you would want to cut back in the general fund, or if you looked at the contingency fund and saying, "We'll take it from that." And at that time, that would be a decision from the council.
Okay. Thank you.
To weigh.
I support this. Thanks.
Councilmember Butler, followed by Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Beth Ann, how do we determine the amount to budget each year for the contingency fund?
That would depend upon the revenues, available revenues. When you're doing the budgeting and as we're going through the process now, you try to match your ongoing revenues with your ongoing expenditures. So if you have some activity that gives you some one-time money, usually you try to take that and use that money as a set-aside in that decision-making. And so that would be part of that budget deliberation process as to what was available, if there were as competing priorities, what collectively you decided could be set aside in the rainy-day fund or contingency fund.
Great. Thank you. So I would imagine that we're pretty close, that the mayor's pretty close to wrapping up the proposed budget for 2014. So if we pass this tonight, when would we implement the contingency fund? Would it be a part of the proposed budget for next year, or would it be for the budget in 2015?
If you adopted the ordinance and created the fund, we would try to include it in the proposed budget for 2014.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Barber?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cher, for your comments this evening. We do have a very strong council, and in the past, we've had a very strong council and one that works very well together. And it's wonderful to be able to think we can look forward into the future and continue that, and hopefully so. But there is one particular section in Section 3, which does speak to the authorization of a two-thirds majority vote for members for this particular... So if you shall withdraw any contingency funds with the exception of transfer to the appropriate operating general fund, it is necessary to have a two-thirds majority of this council. So there is making sure that this is something that all council members want to move forward with. So I just wanted to point that out this evening.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Winterstein?
Thank you. As good as our policies are, and as much as they're improving as we speak, this is the right policy at the right time to add to it, so I'm going to strongly support this. And just if I...one minor clarification, I think the way, what a vote requires, instead of a majority four out of seven, it requires five, a minimum of five votes, not unanimous, but five out of seven to appropriate the funds from the contingency fund. So, yeah, yes, the two-thirds. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Ferkner?
Once the contingency, once the money is put in a contingency fund, it stays there until there is an emergency?
Correct.
So, so, once it's there, the council can review it every year and add to it if they want to, but it would not be available for anything other than an emergency? Is that correct?
Or what the council deems as an emergency.
Can it be re-appropriated in the next budget?
No. I mean, could the council say, "We think it's real important to have this transportation project, so we're going to call that an emergency and reappropriate the money from the contingency fund to a transportation project"?
I would please...yes.
So, and I'm just, if the council, as two-thirds majority of the council, determines this to be an emergency, whatever it is, it could be re-appropriated then?
Correct.
Okay.
Councilmember Winterstein, did you have a comment?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Cher?
Just to follow up on that comment, I'm not quite sure if that's the case, because the statute, I had looked at this before, talks about emergency expenditures in 35A, talks about violence, casualty, riot, war, unanticipated occurrence requiring immediate preservation of order or public health. I'm not quite sure if you can say that, you know, a road project requires the immediate preservation of order or public health unless, you know, the road is washed out or, you know, subject to not being traveled on. This seems really limiting in what those dollars can be used for. And it does, as has been mentioned, require a supermajority vote to untie our hands and take action.
Thank you. I think it was just referenced was Section 3533091 from RCW 3533091. And that in particular is a list of items, I'm sorry, it was 81, that in particular are non-debatable emergencies, and that list would allow, the controlling RCW allowed us to appropriate those funds in a meeting without notice or hearing. I think that's a very important distinction, that whether it be violence in nature, casualty, riot, insurrection, war, or other unanticipated occurrence requiring immediate preservation and order of public health, in a meeting without notice or hearing. And then the second controlling RCW, emergency expenditures that do require a hearing, and I think those are the ones that, I think, Councilmember Ferkner would follow, I'm not so, transportation is probably just an example, but should a majority of the council declare the issue, whatever it was, deem it to be an emergency, it would be under this RCW with which we could appropriate those funds with a two-thirds majority. So I think that that's an important distinction, in that there are conditions without notice and others that do require notice.
Councilmember Barber?
Also, if we want to, I'd like to read a little bit of RCW 35.33.145, where it speaks to contingency fund creation, purpose, support, and lapse. Every city or town may create and maintain a contingency fund to provide monies with which to meet any municipal expense, the necessity or extent of which could not have been foreseen or reasonably evaluated at the time of adopting the annual budget, or from which to provide monies for those emergencies described in RCW 3533.081. So that may provide a little bit additional clarity.
Yes?
Yes, I think Councilmember Barber just hit upon a point, a couple of points that I wanted to make. First, the contingency fund is not limited to emergencies. As Councilmember Barber read, it is for emergencies, that's one of the listed purposes, but another is to meet any municipal expense, the necessity or extent of which could not have been foreseen at the time of adopting the annual budget. So that doesn't have to be emergency, that could be, you know, a new opportunity to purchase some property, or, you know, anything like that, not emergency. Number two, I believe that the contingency fund is subject, like any other fund, to reappropriation at the annual budget, in the annual budget process, and that's in particular the last sentence of 35A 33145, which says, "Any monies in the contingency fund at the end of the fiscal year shall not lapse," meaning you don't have to re-appropriate the money or reallocate the money, "except upon reappropriation by the council to another fund in the adoption of a subsequent budget." So, that money is not just stuck there forever in the annual budget process. And that is tied in with, I just want to point out that RCW 35A 33146, which talks about withdrawals from the contingency fund, says that it won't be withdrawn except by adoption of a vote of a majority of the entire council, which is five, or which is four votes. Now, you have elected to make it two-thirds, which you are entitled to do, but the majority vote of the entire council is also the necessity for adopting or for amending a budget. So, I think that's where it ties in. So, you have a number of options, depending on what the situation is, and only to a limited extent, I think, are the council really tying its hands, because you can reappropriate the money in the upcoming budget if you think there's too much in there for, you know, for your needs.
Councilmember Ferkner?
Would that reappropriation take two-thirds of the council's approval to do that, then, under this?
I don't, well, I don't read it that way. I think that if you're in a, if you're in, without amending the budget, it takes two-thirds to, according to the ordinance, to spend the money out of there. But I don't read this as changing the state law that says a budget has to be passed by a majority of the council, and any amendment is, just takes five votes.
So, a reappropriation would not be the same as using it for an emergency?
Correct.
Other questions or discussion from the council? Is the council ready to act then upon this ordinance? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that was six in favor and one in opposition. Councilmember Cher opposed. Now, the next item to come before the council, Agenda Bill 6717, is a resolution that is coming forward from the administration, and specifically the Development Services Department. And it is a resolution that would enable the school district to provide a notice of intent to petition for annexation for the area known as the Issaquah Middle School property, and to provide for the assumption of indebtedness and payment of taxes, establish zoning for the property to be annexed, and then authorizing the mayor to submit a notice of intention to annex to the King County Boundary Review Board. This is something that the school district is looking toward, because there is a portion of the middle school building and the sports field at the middle school, which is not within the city of Issaquah. It is an island in the city, and how this happened when the middle school was being built, or the junior high, I really don't know, or I just don't know. Anyhow, though, there it is, a small island. And as the school district is moving forward with its plans to relocate the middle school and to relocate Clark and the current Tiger Mountain High School, they would like to be able to do that within the city of Issaquah. So, that's the background, at least as I understand it. And Trish Hanon is here to answer questions and provide more information about this process. I guess we'll have a presentation, and then after that, if the council wishes, it would be appropriate. Move this.
I just found out this afternoon that Jake Cooper is not going to be available tonight, as you can see, to present this, so I'm here to answer any questions that you all might have on this tonight.
Yes.
But Ava did a super job of background already.
Councilmember Butler?
Well, in order to start the discussion, I would move to approve resolution number... 2013-10, accepting the Issaquah School District's notice of intent to petition for annexation for the area known as the Issaquah Middle School property, providing for the assumption of indebtedness and payment of taxes, establish zoning for the property to be annexed, and authorizing the mayor to submit a notice of intention to annex to the King County Boundary Review Board.
Second.
Okay, moved by Butler and seconded by Winterstein. And with that, does the council have questions? Yes, Councilmember Butler?
I would just say that this is probably an action that is long overdue, and it is a good thing to eliminate this island smack dab in the middle of... is a good thing to eliminate this island smack dab in the middle of our fair city.
Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Does this, is this a cost to the city? I see that there's a BRB application fee of $50.
That would be it for us. Actually, it will be a revenue generator, because they'll have to come into the city for their permits and their construction fees.
Is this annexation process then driven by the district?
Yes, they have, their notice of intent to annex is one of the exhibits. They approached us and said, "We really should do this in the city this time with all the permits, so they don't have to drive out to King County." We said, "Yeah, you're right," because it would be harder for them.
And so I realize it's only $50, but I don't, so why does the city have to pay the application fee? Do you know?
That's just because it's our process. I suppose we could ask them.
No, I'm just curious.
But I didn't, I guess I didn't think of that, to ask them.
Well, whoever it's being driven by, they just do the process. That's not the $50. I'm just curious what...
Right.
Yeah. Okay.
I never thought of that, but that's a good ques... I'm surprised that Diane didn't ask me that when I asked her for the money.
Questions or comments?
Other questions?
Yeah. Councilmember Butler.
Well, I think it's a good thing that we will be approving the construction permits and everything, because as we've noticed in areas that we have annexed in the past, a lot of times, there are long-term consequences to have another agency permitting projects and things like that. This will ensure consistency within the city and maintain the standards that we, we believe are appropriate and, and, and match the rest of the city.
Any other questions or comments? Is the council ready then to act on the motion to approve resolution 201310 as just described and discussed? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passed unanimously. Next on the council's agenda is an item called Good of the Order, which is another opportunity to discuss issues of interest to the council. Good of the Order? All right. Seeing and hearing nothing to come before the council for the Good of the Order, and because there is no executive session this evening, the council meeting is adjourned at 8:13 PM.